So Dr. McGee, I already saw, gave, given him, he gave it a try. Um, I needed-
Only a try, huh?
I needed the SAN timer so he could do it. Just kidding.
Calendar.
Sorry, Dr. McGee. Um, so if you'd like to come down and join us, we'll go through a few times and then we'll, you can get on with your meeting. Okay, thank you for having us.
All right, good evening, members of the Windsocket community. My name is Jessica Spur. This is Keith Lazarsky. And as Mr. DeRozier said, we are PE health teachers at Vernon Heights Elementary School. Today, we have five students from two different third grade classes. In PE Health, we were learning the skill of cup stacking. So they are going to show you how cup stacking works and why it's super amazing for a whole bunch of different reasons. So I want to introduce you to students. When I say your names, stand up and give a wave. I want to introduce you to Mason, Janelle, Brooklyn, Jamie, and Ashton. So speed stacks are an untraditional physical education activity that work on so many skills. You do not have to be the most athletic student to be very successful in cup stacking. You will see today that the students are not only working on many gross motor skills, they will be working on hand-eye coordination, reaction time, agility, and fitness. Other skills that you will see in different patterns work on bilateral coordination, focus, and concentration. Speed stacks not only work the right side of the brain, but the left as well. And this helps them when they go back to their classroom to strengthen their neural pathways and making focus and recall and other activities more efficient and easier when they return for math and ELA and things like that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lazarsky and he's going to hang out and finish the rest of the-
It was!
Just so you don't go flying.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that, Mr. Burke.
Okay.
I'm in. Thank you.
Okay.
We still go flying anyway, yeah.
Are you all set, Don?
Yup.
Okay. First thing I want to say is I want to thank Vernon Heights School, its principal, teachers, coaches, and students. Boy, they taught us a lot today. Uh, and none of us are going to be any kind of engineers for the pyramids of Egypt. But thanks again. That was really entertaining. Thank you very much, Mr. DeRozier. Great job! Now, if there's anyone who would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium, take your name and address for the record. Okay, next, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Chairman, I too want to thank the future engineers from Vernon Heights Elementary School for an amazing production here this evening. I also want to thank Mr. DeRozier, principal, and our health PE teachers, Mrs. Spur and Mr. Lazarsky. Great job. The kids are doing some fantastic things in physical education that are affecting not only their gross motor skills, but their fine motor skills and also their processing, which is great. It leads right into the classroom. So thank you very much for all the work you're doing with the students at Vernon Heights.
Again, great job!
I'd like to next recognize two of our coaches here in the Windsocket Education Department. One who is here this evening. I want to recognize first Mr. Mark Piett, who was named the Rhode Island Track and Field Coaches Association 2021 Rhode Island Track and Field Boys Outdoor Track and Field Coach of the Year. So I want to congratulate Mr. Piett on that, on that fine honor.
Good job, good job. Great job!
Piett is an elementary physical education teacher in the district and has been a longtime coach. So again, congratulations, Mr. Piett, on a job well done. Our kids, our student athletes are really fortunate and we're fortunate to have you working with them. So thank you very much.
Nice job!
And secondly, this individual is not here this evening. She's actually a retired teacher in the Windsock, from the Windsocked Education Department. And this is Mrs. Ruth Plant, who was named the National Federation of State High School Associations by the state federal high school associations as the 2020-21 Rhode Island Boys Volleyball Coach of the Year. So again, I want to congratulate Mrs. Plant on a job well done, although she's retired. She still works with our student athletes and we're very fortunate to have her still working with our student athletes. She was a physical education teacher at the high school in the district for more than 25 years. And we're very fortunate to have her, as I said, still working with our student athletes beyond her retirement. So I'd like to congratulate her as well. Uh, next, I would like to recognize the Windsocked High School and their students. I'd like to thank them for the, for their generous coordination of the 2021 Windsocked High School Toy Drive. Due to their efforts, many Windsocked children received toys during the holiday season. So congratulations to them and to the teachers and staff who supported them with that toy drive. Next, I'd like to announce that in late November, the Windsocked Athletic Program received a generous donation of $700 from the Langto family. During the Columbus Day weekend, tickets were sold to win a custom cornhole set with the proceeds being donated to our athletic program. With the efforts of the local businesses and volunteers who helped sell tickets, this donation will provide middle school student athletes more opportunities, either with new equipment, uniforms, or transportation. The department thanks all of the individuals who helped the Langto family make this donation a remarkable success and for giving our student athletes the more tools they need to succeed. Next, the girls' tennis team recently raised and donated $155 to the Gloria Gemma Breast Cancer Foundation. A thank you letter from the foundation was received with their sincere appreciation of this donation while noting that 88 cents of every dollar raised was applied directly to the foundation's three holistic programs and support services that are designed to heal mind, body, and spirit. This donation helped support people in our community, which included family members, coworkers, neighbors. We are very proud of our girls' tennis team and thank them for all their efforts in raising such a generous donation. And finally, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, I have here, if they wouldn't mind stepping to the podium, Mrs. Marandola and Mrs. Turner. At Villanova Middle School, students and staff have a new food pantry and caring closet that they designed to serve families within the school community. Villanova Guidance Counselor Michelle Marandola and music teacher Shannon Turner are here this evening and they're going to speak to us a little bit about the sharing closet and what benefits we are providing for our students here in the city. Ladies?
Good evening. My name is Shannon Turner. I'm the choral director at Villanova. So this year, we decided to start a caring closet and a food pantry. So the caring closet is a office that used to be used for storage in my classroom that we have filled with hygiene supplies for our students. So everywhere, anything from shampoo, conditioner, body wash, hair gel, things like that. I wanted to thank the nonprofits that have helped us with these hygiene supplies, the donations, Hope &amp; Comfort, which is based out of Nida, Massachusetts, Amenity Aid, which is based out of Warwick, and Red Line, which is based out of North Providence. We also had three Donors Choose projects that were funded. One of them was funded within two days. So we raised a total of, I think it's $6,500 in hygiene supplies. So we're able to offer our students any of these supplies during the school day to bring home. We offer them to families. We make bags for them. And we also have clothing, winter jackets, shoes, things like that. So it's been a really big success so far.
I'm Michelle Marand, school counselor and Feinstein coordinator at Villa. Another undertaking this year, our school, was the Villa Village Pantry that we started as a Feinstein project. We could provide our students with much needed food staple items. We had noticed that the backpack program that we have had been a little bit less, probably because it has increased so much. And we don't have the supplemental dinners anymore this year. So we decided that we would have an in-house place to store non-perishable food items for our students. We have approximately 76% of our students that are eligible for free or reduced lunch. So we definitely saw a need. Were able to, we had a food drive in November. We were able to collect the 3,000 food items for families, which was well beyond anything that I had anticipated. And then with that, we were able to also collect some funds from teachers. We were able to give out 10 turkey baskets with, you know, all the necessary sides and whatnot. And then we were able to give out 11 food boxes to our families to get them through the winter break, because a lot of our families rely on the breakfast and lunch programs at school. We will, we are continuing to reach out to families as I meet with them, the school social workers and whatnot. We have conversations with them, find out who's in need. We then contact families. We've even had our SRO, our School Resource Officer, deliver to a family that wasn't able to pick up. So he was very supportive and it was another positive way to have our SRO reaching out community as well. So we've been very fortunate and we were happy to be able to do this for our kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I just want to let Ms. Marandola know that, I don't know if you're aware, that the Rotary Club has a just-for-you clothes closet at 245 Main Street, right on the corner of Main and Clinton. You may want to reach out to Nicole Brien at Rotary. You know Nicole? Because she's the president of Rotary. But this, this closet has clothes from all ages, for all kids. Clothes are washed, clothes are clean, we get donations. It's something, and we've been, you know, we've been getting families that come in and basically shop. You know, everything's free, everything is there, it's for both boys and girls. It's something you may want to check into, because as you provide supplies and food, you know, you may have families that need clothes and just don't know about the program. So you may want to look into that. Thank you. Now I'll make a motion to anyone else have any comments for Dr. McGee.
Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke.
I just want to say that the measure of a great coach is often seen in the great athletes that he has developed. And we also, we need to note that under Coach Piett's coaching and development, that he has developed several athletes who have achieved All-American status in from Windsocked. And he has also coached several athletes that have gone on to some of the major colleges and universities in the United States. So once again, kudos to Coach Piett, a well-deserved Coach of the Year award. Thank you. Thank you for all you do for our athletes.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion, receive, and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the December 15, 2021 closed meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections, amendments? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the December 15, 2021 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Again, any corrections? None. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas? Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Does any school committee member want to take any items out of order or discuss any particular item? Ms. Kapiskas? Let the record show that Ms. Kapiskas has recused herself. Any, anyone else?
Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
I just wanted to ask how the Community Care Alliance is setting up a business office in our schools. How does that work? I know it's S M money, but I was just curious, the arrangement, what's going on there? Which is a great thing, by the way.
Burke, this is actually a continuation of the work that we already did with Community Care Alliance-
Perrier, we can't hear you.
This is, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hold on, we pulled the mask down here. This is actually a continuation of the work that we did over the summer with Community Care Alliance. Community Care Alliance actually collects the billings for all of our community partners, the Y, Rivers Edge, all the community partners that we're working with. And they, in turn, bill the school department. So it's sort of like we were, it's the same thing that we were doing over the summer, where all the community partners were doing work with the students across the district. They would submit their billings to CCA, and then CCA in turn would send an invoice to us. So we'd only have to fiscally deal with CCA in the situation. This is the purchase order that's going to set up the work that we're going to be doing throughout the school year.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll go into Communications and ESER 3 Community Input Meeting. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier? Or is it you?
I'm going to start and then I'm going to hand it off to Brad.
Okay.
So as the committee is aware, ESER 3, which is oftentimes we're asked, what does the acronym ESER stand for? It's the American Rescue Plan. And it's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So there, as you know, this is the third of the ESER funds that have been, or that will soon be provided to school districts. It was approved by the United States Department of Education in June. This funding will help ensure that districts and schools can continue to operate safely, support sustained access to in-person instruction, and address the social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of students due to the impact of COVID. So here in Windsocket, we are slated to receive a little over $29 million for ESER 3. There, and that money is good for a couple of years, the '22, '23, and '23, '24 school years. However, the money is not just given to districts. Districts have to submit a request for the fund. And as part of that process, districts have to do some things to involve the community, to get some feedback from the community as we move forward in putting our ESER 3 plan together. So the different components to this is first, there's going to be a survey that's going to be sent to the WED community, to parents and families and teachers and staff, which will basically solicit feedback around a needs assessment. So there are a series of approximately 10 or so questions that people will be asked to respond to. They'll submit that, and that's one part of the needs assessment process. The second part is going to occur next Tuesday. It'll be a virtual workshop, in which, again, families from the WED, from the community, teachers and staff will be invited to this virtual meeting, and we will again be soliciting more feedback. Similar to the survey, however, we are going to be explaining a little bit more to folks who can attend that virtual meeting around the areas that we have designated as areas of need for ESER 2 and for the ESER, oh, for ESER 3, I should say, in the ESER 3 Fund. The next step after that is the Finance Subcommittee is scheduled to meet the Wednesday before the next school committee meeting, which is in two weeks. And then the final piece to this process is on Wednesday, the last school committee meeting in January, the school committee will then vote to approve the plan that we will be submitting to the Department of Education. So there are multiple steps in the process that school districts have to follow. Thus far, we have, we being myself, administrators, directors, have been really conducting our own needs assessment based on data that we've been collecting over the last two years. And we've started the process of putting together areas that we believe need to be addressed over the course of this, of the ESER 3 grant award. So having said that, I'm going to turn the rest over to Mr. Perry.
Mr. Superintendent, your tough act to follow. He pretty much stole all my thunder here. He reviewed the timeline. We're going to be following that timeline. In front of the school committee is the preliminary budget. It's cut into three major categories right now. Employee salaries, employee benefits, and then other miscellaneous items. We have a description here. I won't go into super, super deep detail this first time through, as this is our preliminary budget. We certainly will get into it in a deeper, in a deeper depth at the workshop coming up. So what we want to do now is get this budget out to the community. We'll be sending this out this week, and this will be used to solicit the feedback that the superintendent was talking about, either through the survey or through the workshop next Tuesday. So once we get that feedback, we'll all gather it up, and then we'll put together a final budget. It will come back to you at the next school committee meeting. Upon approval there, we'll then submit it to RIDE, and we'll work through the approval process with them. So I don't know if you have any, if you want to go deeper into the budget right now, or if you'd rather save that for the workshop.
An overview, kind of an overview questions, a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
I look, we're sending out a survey for folks to respond in terms of asking them, where do you, what's the, what's the important areas? Where do you think we should spend the money, et cetera, et cetera? When I look at this overview, there's like 4 point something million that is basically allocated to salaries of individuals. It seems these have been locked in at this point.
Well, nothing's been locked in in this budget. This budget's totally fluid at this time.
So none of those positions have been locked in. These are estimates. So when, then of course, and that's 4 million out of the 28, 29 million, plus we have, you know, some large chunks, the LEAF program, we have furniture and carpets, which we'll go into detail at some point. We know we've got the auditorium, and we've got all kinds of other things. Is there, within the scope of this budget, do we have room to acknowledge the survey results? Because...
Oh, absolutely.
Because folks may have different ideas that say, especially if you get a top three, top four, you know, requests, may or may not fit this.
We have to, we're looking forward to that community input, and if we see some things that are good, I think we can make changes to this budget, absolutely. This is not set in stone by any stretch of the imagination. We're looking for the community feedback. We're looking for community input, and we're looking to work with them to make this budget the best that it can be.
Out of the 14 million that we've got here, we've got, we've got at least 10, 12 million that's rounded, it's in rounded numbers. So I know those are...
Absolutely. And also, another thing to point out is that this is, this budget totals $14.4 million. That's for one year. So we basically are splitting this up over to the next two fiscal years, which is fiscal year '22, '23, and then '23, '24. So we're looking to lock in any positions that we add, that we're going to want to make sure that we can fund them for at least two fiscal years. And then we'll kind of deal with what we need to when we get to the end of this.
Because if we, if we hardened and locked in those salaries and the benefits that we have from 4 million, we would say, we would want to see that again in year two.
And it's already constructed that way. So it's constructed two equal year, side by side, and that's how we get to the 28.9 million.
As I'm concerned, I'm looking forward to the survey results and to the workshop. Anyone else?
Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke.
Brad, the positions that are listed here, are they all new positions, or are we now just paying them through, are their present positions being paid through ESER funds?
Everything we currently have listed on here is a new position.
New position. So for example, a social worker at the high school, this is an additional social worker than what we have.
Correct.
Just one follow-up question to Mr. Burke's question. After year two, are these, I mean, what happens to those positions?
I think that's going to be a discussion...
That's going to be a big question, right?
It's going to be a discussion that we're going to need to have. We're going to start to evaluate, as we are with ESER 2, where we really are falling when we get to the close of the first year of ESER 2. Are there any, what's working? What can we pull into the general fund when we do our budget for this year? And what can we continue to keep in ESER 2? So these decisions are going to be made as we renew the budget every year. What's working? What do we want to bring into the general fund? What do we need to clear out of the general fund to cover that? These are the discussions that we're going to be having year over year as the ESER money solely goes away.
Follow-up, please. On the positions, they're all listed as Step 10. That's just a...
Absolutely. 100, we want to budget the biggest number right now. That's the takeaway here. We're budgeting the biggest number possible. I think salaries, if we do manage to fill all these positions, will be lower than that. But again, we want to budget for the worst and hope for the best. That's really the approach here. And that goes for the benefits as well. We benefit, we budget all, like full benefits, family health, family dental. Most of the time, not everybody takes the benefits across the board, so.
Thank you. That's what I figured, but I just wanted to do.
I guess the miracle, I say miracle, because it's tough to find subs, it's tough to find anyone, maybe difficult to fill these positions. That's something that we're going to, we'll be dealing with.
Absolutely. It's something that we're going to deal with. It's something that we're going to aggressively pursue, filling these positions. And again, we'll change, we'll change gears if things aren't working. That's really, really how the approach will take. We'll shift gears on the fly if things aren't working. And we do have a lot of maneuverability with this budget as well. So we can go back to RIDE with an amendment, make an adjustment, and we can add things, add more things if we see them working. We can take away things that, you know, maybe we're having trouble filling if a position we're filling. So we really have a lot of flexibility, even after you approve it on the next school committee meeting. We're still going to have flexibility down the road.
Good to hear.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? When did you have? Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the communications report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
McGee, I'll ask you for your superintendent's report.
I'm going to begin, as I usually do, with personnel matters. So we have had a total of three FTE positions that we have, we've added to the district. Two of those come by way of two principals that we unfortunately lost here in the Wenonah Parkett Education Department. Mr. McKinnon, who was the principal at Harris Elementary, and Mrs. Moniz, who was the principal at the Hope Your Citizens campus, both accepted positions in districts closer to where they live. So I'd like to thank the two of them publicly for their commitment and the hard work that they've given to the students, both in their schools and their, and the community at large. They will be greatly missed. We have two folks who are going to be serving as interims for the remainder of the school year. Miss Kathy Carvallo, who was the Assistant Principal at Hope Your Citizens, has been, I've named her the interim principal for the remainder of the year. In her, her previous former position, Assistant Principal, has been advertised, and we hope to fill that position as soon as we can. And then Mr. McKinnon is the interim, who's taking over for Mr. McKinnon, is Richard Zagradi, who was a longtime educator here in Wenonah Parkett, over more than 25 years, who has been retired and has been working, actually still in the district for the last seven or so years. He's been filling in for administrative, various administrative positions throughout the district, and he has a very good, has built a really good relationship with teachers and staff across the district, is a nice way about him. So we are happy to have those two folks who will be on the interims for the remainder of the school year. And Harris, the Harris position has been advertised, and we will, as we proceed into the winter and the spring, when we feel as though we have a good pool of candidates, we'll start the process of implementing for the following school year. Those are really the two, and we hired an ESL inclusion teacher at Wenonah Parkett High School as well. And we have three non-certified positions that we filled in addition to those. So that is the personnel part of my report. The second part of my report is just a quick update to the committee. On January 6th, last Friday, the Rhode Island Department of Health issued guidance updates for COVID-19 prevention strategies in Crete, 12 schools. The, this memo was sent to myself and to all other districts in the state. It outlines the changes in guidance that RIDO has come out with. I'm just going to read to you just a few of the highlights from this. We are starting this officially tomorrow in the district. I sent out a letter to the WED community a couple of days ago. I met with Renee DeSento, who is our nurse coordinator for the district, and she and I sat down on Monday to look through everything, make sure that we were prepared to roll this out, and we decided that we would roll it out tomorrow. I wanted to have an opportunity to just let the committee know that it would be rolled out first before we proceed with that. But some of the highlights are shortening the isolation and quarantine duration for students and staff to five days from 10. And then streamlining the case investigation and contact tracing for students and staff. As the committee is aware, the contact tracing has been just, and a job in and of itself, really, for our nurses. In fact, we've attempted to hire people from outside the district to come in and provide some assistance with contact tracing, and we didn't really, we weren't that successful. We hired a few, and some of them have left, and to take that load off of the nurses. Because the nurses, you know, are expected to, you know, be a nurse during the day and do what they do. So the contact tracing will, while it will continue in some instances, it will not continue across the board throughout the district. We're going to be implementing the Monitor to Stay Quarantine Program, which basically says that if a student is or a staff member is considered a close contact, if they do not have symptoms, then they are able to attend school and they do not need to quarantine, which they had to before. That was what we found through our data, and school districts across the state were finding the same thing, is that the vast majority of students and staff who were having to quarantine because of being deemed a close contact, they're not testing positive. So the number of days that those students have missed has just been astronomical. So we're hopeful that, that the stay, if you feel, if you have symptoms, whoever... Third is, the third highlight is waiving the requirement for negative tests for a close contact to end point. So, so that, those are the highlights. As I said, I sent out a letter to the WED community a few days ago that did two things. I shared this memo with everyone, with all the information, and the district, we, Mrs. DeSento put together a sort of a summary for the community, a bulleted summary, which sort of took everything that's in this document and sort of outlined it for everyone, which is, you know, a little easier, a little easier read than reading through, which you sometimes have to do through this four or five times. Quite confusing. So, you know, I'm hopeful that this cheat sheet, if you will, has been helpful, really helpful to the community, to let them know what the changes in the guidance are from the Department of Health. Having said that, Mr. Chairman and committee, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
The update is as of now, of course, since not too long ago, the governor wanted to do the Testing Stay Program. That's gone, by the wayside. So things are still fluid as we go along.
Testing Stay, you know, we were, we had actually sent in a proposal to RIDE and to RIDO, and the plan was for us to pilot at one school, one elementary school. And, you know, we were, we were starting the process just prior to this change in guidance. And I think that had the guidance not changed to the Monitor and Stay, Monitor to Stay, I think it would have been challenging for us, just in terms of manpower to have implemented the Testing Stay. That would have been, really required us to hire more people, because while we looked to pilot initially, you know, ultimately, the goal would have been for it to move to these elementary schools. And I think that would have been a real challenge for us to have sustained.
Anyone else? Any, anyone have comments, questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclaire. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into committee reports, and we'll start with the Building Capital Update. Mr. Toriani?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Building Capital Committee met last evening to resume our discussions about our Stage 2 application to RIDE. Last night's meeting mostly entailed a discussion around finding suitable options for whether we're going to renovate, raise, or replace buildings throughout the district. The committee will be meeting again next week to continue with our deliberations, to ultimately come with a recommendation for the architects to finalize it at the end of this month. In addition to that, Mr. Perry announced that we did receive approval for, I believe it was $1.4 million in upfront funding for capital projects to start immediately.
That is correct. That's been released immediately. And as you see in the ESER 3 budget, there was $600,000 for auditorium repairs. The initial thinking by me was to combine that $1.4 million of pay-go money with the $600,000 in ESER 3 funding to come to a $2 million total for the auditorium. I believe that was the money that we were looking to put into it right now. So again, that was just my preliminary thinking. This is going to go to the School Building Committee for... This is going to go to the school building committee for further discussion, but just to kind of put those two pieces together for you to see where the numbers are coming from. Also, we were approved, sorry, sorry, Mr. Torriani, we approved for half a million dollars for a science lab renovations as well. So that's all 100% funded, and we'll be looking to get that ball rolling as quickly as possible.
We concluded the meeting with a robust discussion about whether or not we wanted to move the meeting times, and I think we settled on evening at 4:30 in the afternoons for the foreseeable future. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Torriani. And as you said, the committee, the building committee, still has quite a bit of work to do, just in planning in terms of what we're going to do with the schools, the whether certain schools will be raised, others will be expanded and modified. We're in the middle of that process, which hopefully we will come to an agreed-upon approach, which will then go through up to the school committee. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is a very open and fluid process. Nobody's issuing any directives or dictums as to, we got to close this school or open that school or whatnot. I would say it's, it's pretty fluid at this time.
We're in process.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have any comments from Mr. Senator Torriani? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the building capital update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to please give us the CELEC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CELEC met a week ago on January 6th, Thursday evening, at 6:03 PM. Among the topics we discussed were SurveyWorks, which is the Sprite survey that goes out to family, staff, and students. It opens January 18th, and will remain open through March. All were reminded to please complete it in your capacity as students, staff, or family. And it was noted, everyone was reminded, that that email does not come from RIDE or the Windsocket Education Department, but it comes from a company called Panorama. And if you don't get it, check your spam, it may not be there. There was also a bit of a discussion about proposed revisions to the graduation requirements, which will be effective for 2026. If proposed by RIDE, they would have what we deem to be a very negative impact on students with IEPs, as well as our MLL students, and it would virtually make it impossible for alternate assessment students to ever attain a diploma. The Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Committee, which I sit, is participating in this public discussion. Ms. Agia said MLL will participate, will be, be participating in the public discussion, and Dr. McGee says the superintendency group would be involved as well. We had a presentation at our meeting by Gigi DiBello regarding Project Ware, with a Google slide, or they call it PowerPoint. Presentation about some of the things that are effective. And I thought that one of the most important things, which she made all of us aware, that there is a link directly on our website for mental health services, and there are new postings put up continuously on different topics. And I think it's something that if you haven't taken a look at the website in a while, take a look at it. It's right on the opening page. Click on it, it'll give you information, phone numbers, a whole bunch of information. Valid by the usual superintendent's comments, special education director comments, and school committee liaison comment. A member commented about hiring for one-to-ones. Ms. Morrell reported that they're interviewing anyone who's qualified and who applies, but the problem is there are few applicants, and many are offered positions to take them, but call back and then subsequently decline them, leading to a shortage, in particular of one-to-ones in district. And that, I, this shortage is all over the place, but I just focus on that, because with regard to CELEC, that's an important issue. The meeting was then adjourned at 7:15.
Mrs. Kepiscus, any comments, questions for? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a CELEC update. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Senator Torriani to give us the technology facility update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening before you is to consolidate technology facilities custodial updates for the technology department. Over the last five weeks, the technicians have been working very hard to balance the staff and student work orders, along with several technology projects. The following list is a summary of the projects. So we've completed the distribution of student Chromebooks, the new Chromebooks in grades one through five, grades 10, grades 11. So grades K through 12 all now have the newest Chromebooks that we just, we acquired towards the end of the summer. In addition to that, I'm happy to report that all high school classrooms receive projectors, cards, document cameras, which now means that grades K through 12 in the district, everyone should have a document camera set up along with, along with a projector in, at the elementary and the high school level, a cart. We also distributed MLL iPads with Ms. Agia's department in terms of testing for apps and usage and potential further development in the future. We've installed 10, a 10-point charging station in all elementary and middle school classrooms. So for those students that forget to charge their Chromebook, or the charge doesn't last long, they now have an option in the classroom, which was, has been an ongoing concern, now that we've moved to one-to-one take home. All library media center equipment was upgraded, and we have made a complete pass throughout the district and provided FOB IDs for all staff. We will be circling back to catch those staff that may have been absent on the days that we took pictures and created the clouds. The technology department data staff are in the process of reconciling and validating federal and state reporting. The biggest report they're working on now is the civil rights data collection, which concludes at the end of the month of February. We're also working on the March 1st snapshot report, as the committee is aware, that directly impacts our funding. We're reviewing the graduation cohort data. We're cleaning up school messenger data. We, if the committee may recall, during the community outreach meeting that we had prior to the holiday break, some parents voiced concerns about, or voiced their opinion that maybe we could explore using, sending these out in multiple languages and allowing text messaging. So we're, we're in the process of cleaning that up and enhancing the system there. We are also in the process of cleaning up student contact information, and our newest hire, Alicia Pinto, has been working on cleaning up the RIDE data portal, so our principals can go in and access and assess all of the most current, recent data available from prior testing and assessments. On the facilities, we have completed, and we're waiting to do a final walkthrough of the Windsocket High School Thundermist renovations. You may recall that Thundermist had to move out because of the COVID regulations, but the renovations are complete. We have a test tomorrow with the fire marshal's office, and hopefully they'll be moved back sometime next week, pending approval of all the tests. The Windsocket High School Nurse Clerk's office has been renovated over the holiday break. The assistant principal's office was renovated, because we, we had, we had an additional assistant principal. We are finishing out the outside panels, and the new sign went up at Coleman, and we continue to upgrade the medical lock boxes throughout the district. Hopefully that will be completed in the very near future. So they've been very, very busy, and to note that they've been short-staffed. We currently have five vacancies in the facilities custodial department. So it's, it's been a, been a real drag, let's just say that. Transportation, in the transportation department, we're also have several vacancies, and because of the driver shortages due to quarantine, we've been experiencing delays with transportation, but they are working on trying to find additional drivers. And the school resource officer program, they continue to look at the traffic patterns. We finished our review at Pofier Citizens. They've added some additional traffic cones. There's not much we can do, it kind of is what it is, but we're hoping to remedy some of the traffic flow issues at that campus through the capital planning process that I spoke about earlier this evening. We'll be moving on and looking at Brendan Heights Elementary School next week, and then from there, move on to Harris, Globe, and Savoy to complete our review for this school year. And finally, the SROs continue to work on the AFP development for a safety review of all of our protocols here in the district. And in addition to that, they are also looking at, and it ties in directly into our safety protocols, new walkie-talkies, which I believe that was on the SER III discussion earlier. That's one of the items in there that we need to look at in terms of proven communication on our campuses, because some of the walkie-talkies, Leclerc, I'm sure, Leclerc, I'm sure you've recalled, some of the walkie-talkies don't work in all of our buildings. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Torriani. As part of the building committee's work, I would think that one of the items to be looking at is the egress out of Pofier. Remember when the building, when the school was built, it was thought of egressing on leaving the school on by Delude and Birch Street? That would have made things, like, a lot easier then, but there was a question about wetlands, and it's not like you've got a lot there. And perhaps it wasn't the wetlands that was the problem, maybe it was a shortage of cash, money available. So even whatever we do there, one of the things maybe we should be underlining is maybe assisting that traffic pattern at Pofier because of Robinson and Winthrop, which, as you know, is a disaster in the morning and in the afternoon. If there was egress out of, out of, through the back end and Birch, I, I think this thing would, it really would facilitate the traffic in and out of that school.
Yeah, we're going to look at that. I believe it was sometime in the fall, maybe it was as early as the spring. Dr. McGee, Dr. Holt, myself, and Ms. Morrell, we went toward some of the wetlands property back there to see exactly what was available to us. So it looked like it was pretty open, looked like part of it might be something that we could utilize. I, it's a little like a place like maybe kids hang out and probably get into the wrong kind of things, so maybe we can do something about that area.
It's not like, there's a lot of wetlands there. I know, Mr. Leclerc and I are kind of familiar with that area. Not much. So it would be, it would be great. There is a piece of the swamp, but you don't need all of it. You don't have to get rid of all of it, just, just enough to put in the road, because a lot of it is hard rock. I know that, we played there as kids. So it'll be interesting to see what happens, because that would help the traffic flow in that area.
I think it's an option we can certainly explore, and again, it'll disrupt an area where it looks like maybe a bunch of high school age kids or something hang out, and, you know, we can, we'll put a bridge of one stone on that.
Any, any comments, questions for Mr. Senator Torriani? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facility update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do not have any unfinished business. Next, we'll move into a discussion on vaccine rates for community students and test sites for community. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not the first time that I have put the vaccination rates in the city on the agenda. I do it again because I am concerned about the health of our students, and I am concerned about the health of our families. And I've looked at these rates right from the Rhode Island Department of Health. In fact, I think they are from exactly yesterday, when I, when I was on that site. Just let me give you the, the numbers, and then we'll see what we need to do about them. Because right now, in the state of Rhode Island, 77.3% of eligible residents have been fully vaccinated. 77.3% of eligible residents have been vaccinated. It's not bad. Unfortunately, in the city of Windsocket, fully vaccinated eligible residents come in at 55.7%. So just over half of the residents eligible to be vaccinated are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Also, in terms of information that, that deals with our student body, the only, the only data they have deals with the ages of zero to 24. So it's a little skewed, because obviously our student community are more from five to 18. But, but the rate still is appropriate. From zero to 24 in the city of Windsocket, the rate is 30.1%. That means one out of every three students, if this, this rate deals with all of them, is vaccinated. I really wish I could say more about trying to encourage our students and our families to be vaccinated. If that's your choice, I guess you have to make. You know, I do think that, I grew up towards the end of the polo, I mean, true, the polo, of the polio epidemic in the United States. And I was a little boy, and we were getting towards the end of the epidemic, and then a vaccine was created. And I do remember my parents being very, very nervous that, that I and my sister would somehow contact polio. But we were vaccinated. In fact, we're still vaccinating our children today for polio. And we don't have polio anymore in our country. So, just an idea. So I do present these, these rates, and hopefully we can do better. The rates have, since I mentioned this a month or so ago, the rates have gone up 6% for the fully vaccinated in the city, which is improvement, but hopefully we can do better. I also put on my agenda here, test sites for the community. And many of you already know probably, and it was just recently announced, the governor has opened up a test, a state test site now in the parking lot, or not just the parking lot, but, but the main room of the Elks Lodge on Sosa Street. Thundermist employees are running the, the site, and it goes from nine to six, seven days a week. I do believe in needed appointment. So, so obviously, finally, there's a good test site up in northern Rhode Island here in Windsocket. So I just want to pass on that information to our communities, to our parents, and to our students, if, if they need availability of it. And I think that's all I need to say, Mr. Chairman.
I wish your news was a lot better. I wish the rates were a lot higher, but they're not. But I don't know how many of us has seen today on, you know, world news, it appears that the province of Quebec is going to start taxing individuals and families. It's going to hit them in the pocketbook if they're not fully vaccinated. That should be interesting. That's going to be paying, that's going to be going to, you know, their capital, the provincial capital, and I don't know how that's going to impact all of Canada, but that's what Quebec wants to do, because their rates are very low. So they figure if we can't get them through common sense or science, we're going to get them through the pocketbook. So that should be very interesting to see what happens there. Mrs. Kepiscus?
I just wanted to add, for those who might not be familiar, because I have two, two children at school there, CCRI is now running vaccination and test sites, and their test sites are running 24 hours a day on campuses, by appointment only, but 24 hours a day. And it's not just limited to CCRI students and faculty. So that's another resource, that's just starting, the 24-hour-a-day test sites. And that may be helpful to some people as well, if you can get to the campuses. And they're, I know they're all on bus routes, I don't know about Newport, it's the outlier, that's where my daughter goes. But certainly, flat again at night, we'll have test sites.
Now unless, you know, some folks are, continue to be reluctant to be vaccinated, it's only until they're pushed against the wall, well, I can't travel, I have to, I have to be tested, I have to get vaccinated before I go on a trip, or when I come back from wherever I go, that's when they get vaccinated. Whatever the reason, it would be nice if a lot more folks, especially in our city, got vaccinated.
Chairman, since you've raised a couple of things, our rates are the second lowest in the state. The town of Tiverton has the lowest percentage rate, and in Windsocket, we have the second lowest.
Anyone else? And we'll go on to our second item in new business. Make a motion to discuss and approve whether the Windsocket School Committee should meet in person or virtually pursuant to Governor McGee's executive order. You want to take this one, Mrs. Kepiscus, or do you want me?
Whatever you prefer, Mr. Chair. I, I can explain why I asked that it be put on the agenda.
Please.
I had asked that it be put on the agenda because it had been decided that we were going to be meeting in person as a school committee, and I, my question was whether or not that decision should be made by the entire committee. That was my first question. We all know Governor McGee issued, McGee issued executive orders that continued the mask mandate in schools until February 4th, and also gave public bodies the option under the OMA to meet virtually as opposed to in person. And when I approached this topic with the chair, right before the CELEC meeting, he was debating it with Mr. Senator Torriani at the time, and the chair informed Mr. Senator Torriani that the school committee would be meeting in person, and I chimed in and said, well, my subcommittees that I chair are going to be meeting virtually, I can guarantee that. And, and the more I thought about it, the more I thought is, we should actually discuss it as a committee, what our decision is. And I, I know what your justification is, and I leave that to you.
Folks had asked whether or not we should meet. Some folks want it to be virtual, school committees should be virtual. Some folks wanted to be virtual, school committees should be virtual, and some wanted to be, you know, you, you're an elected official, you should be live and, and meet in person. My thoughts are that we should be meeting in person. If we're going to ask our children to come to school and be live at school, it seems to me that we, the school committee, should meet here in person. If we didn't, for example, tonight, we would have met virtually, we wouldn't have been able to play with the cops, we wouldn't have been able to enjoy that class, those, those students. But it's not just for that. When I first heard the governor's order, you can stay at home, we go virtual, I went yay. However, next, almost the same, same second it was, the second after that was, wait a minute, all our children, our teachers, administrators are coming in to work. And the governor said, safest place, the best place for children to be is to be in school. There was a, a meeting of the Rhode Island School Committee Chairs this week with the commissioner, and the commissioner said, got to go to school. So, seems to me that, I think formally, I think it's a good idea to have brought this to the committee, and I think formally, we should adopt whether or not we should attend regular school committee, the regular school committee's in person, and virtual, and, and to me, it would make sense to go virtual for the subcommittees, because we get more attendance at those. I know CILAC, that's always worked in the past, that's worked well, and, you know, you may still meet in person for some of the subcommittees, but if subcommittee chooses to meet virtually, they, they can do this right now. As long as that executive order stands, then public bodies can meet virtually. Tell you that across the, across the river, the city council, no, we're still on the same side of the river, the city council is meeting live. The only thing they've done is eliminate good and welfare, and I don't know why they've done that. I think it's a good idea to keep, to keep our meetings as they are, and hopefully, people will, will come to our meetings, as we've had parents, coaches, students here. That's my thought. Chairman? Vice Chair Burke?
Your, your explanation is, is, is right on what I'm thinking as well. As long as our students and staff and administrators are in the, having to come to the building for in-person learning, I think the school committee should be meeting live. Simple as that.
Leclerc?
I'm on the same wavelength. I thoroughly believe it's a committee decision, should be made as, as a whole, with each and one of us taking the turn as a say, but I, I think as the students are going to be in class, I think we should be here all.
My only comment, and as, I'll reiterate to you, is I just don't, I'm not saying I'm opposed to meeting in person, do not misunderstand me, but I just don't think the presence of students in the building, in classes, and the meeting of the school committee in person is connected. I understand you're considering it as a morale issue, I get that, but I think the exposures are different, because students are basically in the same classroom with the same people every day, same teachers. Yes, they're going home to their families, they may be going to other places, but we are all in different walks of life out of this building, at least the people on the dais that are from the school committee.
Right.
We're all in contracted with people in workplaces, and then we're coming here and creating a different exposure. I'm not saying I'm opposed to meeting in person, that's not what I'm saying. I just want everyone to weigh that in the balance as well, because I really don't think it's the same issue, it's a different issue. Also, not a lot is, I mean, yes, presentations by school groups would be lost if we returned to virtual. I don't know that it's going to be long-term anyway, that the relief from the OMA requirement. But I think that you don't lose a tremendous amount by going virtual with school committee meetings, whereas we very well know a tremendous amount is lost by going virtual with education. There's a tremendous amount of loss, every district has suffered it. But I want to make clear, I'm not opposed to meeting in person. My, my, the reason why I wanted it on the agenda is I, I felt that it should have been a committee decision and not a unilateral decision.
Those were recommendations when people were trying to press whether or not we'd meet, and I said, well, how can we meet? How could, how could the school committee meet? Because it was like, you will meet virtually. No, no, we'll, we'll decide that in my own mind, and I'm glad you, you put it on the agenda, because now we can make it formal, the way it should be. And maybe we'll have two motions, one for the, the regular school meeting, school committee meetings, and one for the subcommittee meeting. So, I'll make a motion that all regular school committee meetings be held in person. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any other comments on that? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Yes.
We want to be in need for the second motion, yes?
Leclerc?
Yes.
We want to have a motion for the, for the subcommittees, because there, I think those could be held virtually. Okay, so then we won't do it. But, but we have an executive order, so there is an executive order out so that public bodies can hold virtual meetings. So, I leave it up to the chairman and the chairwomen of, of the, of the subcommittees, if they choose, if they choose to have a virtual meeting or not. Obviously, that discussion usually occurs between the chairperson and the administrators, the directors, that's how we've done it, and the superintendent as well, what makes sense. And that's that. Okay, we have nothing else on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:17, 8:18. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.